Do you want to look at mine?
I just wanted to do this. It's October 20th. Or did.
I know, what's that, 27?
Okay. Good evening, welcome. Thank you for joining us. This is Marion City Council meeting Thursday, November 17th. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Mr. Harper.
Here.
Mr. Jensen.
Here.
Ms. Atkins. Mayor Abouasly.
Here.
Mr. Brandt.
Here.
Ms. Menser.
Here.
Mr. Sterned.
Here.
Councilmember Atkins did advise us that she'll be arriving a little bit late. Okay, at this time, we have a moment of silence. Thank you. First on the agenda this evening is a proclamation for Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Day. I've asked Councilmember Menser to make the proclamation.
Whereas pancreatic cancer has become one of our time's most devastating diseases, and whereas pancreatic cancer has surpassed breast cancer to become the third leading cause of cancer deaths in the United States, and is projected to become the second leading cause by the year 2025, and whereas when symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it is generally in later stages, and only 10% of pancreatic cancer patients are diagnosed when the disease is confined to their pancreas, and 91% of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first five years of diagnosis. And whereas it is projected that in 2022 approximately 580 Iowans will be diagnosed and 470 deaths will occur. And whereas the long-term health and well-being of the residents of Marion are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness about pancreatic cancer, and ongoing research into early detection causes an effective comprehensive treatments. Now therefore, I, Sarah Menser, on behalf of Nicholas Abouasly, Mayor of the City of Marion, Iowa, do hereby designate November 17th, 2022, as Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Day in the city of Marion, Iowa.
We have Ms. Olguersby. Come on forward, please. Sorry, I should have called you up before she read it, but thank you for being here to accept the proclamation. Would you like to say anything?
Thank you very much for acknowledging that we have our Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Day. It actually is falling on today, so we all were purple today, didn't we? So we appreciate all your support for making this awareness for this because it is something that's very near and dear to our hearts. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks, Sarah. At this time, we have a public forum, which is a time that is set aside on the agenda for comments from members of the public on any item that is on the agenda but not associated with a public hearing. If anyone has comments related to an item that's that is associated with a public hearing, there will be time to address the council at that time. Does anyone wish to just address the council? Please come forward. Okay, we'll close this part of the meeting and move on to the consent agenda. Mayor Protem.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as follows. Items A1 through G1, Resolutions 30972 through 30995.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented, which includes items A1 through G1, Resolutions 30972 through 30995. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. For the next portion of the agenda, I will turn over the meeting to the Mayor Protem.
Mayor Protem, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abouasly's abstention as follows. Items D1 to E1, Resolutions 30996 to 30997.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abouasly's abstention as follows. Items D1 through E1, Resolutions 30996 to 30997. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will vote. Alls in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Alls opposed, please say no. Motion carried with one abstention. I will move the meeting back to the mayor.
Mayor, move to approve Resolution Number 30998, accepting bids and awarding contract to Truck Country for the replacement of the Public Services Fleet chassis in the amount of $2,755,170.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 30998, accepting the bids and awarding the contract to Truck Country for the replacement of the Public Services Fleet chassis in the amount of $2,755,170. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving Resolution Number 30998, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve Resolution Number 30999, approving change order number 11 with Midstates Concrete Industry regarding the precast concrete package for the Public Services Maintenance Facility and authorizing payment in the amount of $53,844 for the mobilization and parcel erection of the precast wall panels.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 30999, approving change order number 11 with Midstates Concrete Industry regarding the precast concrete package for the Public Service Maintenance Facility and authorizing the payment of $53,844 for mobilization and partial erection of the precast wall panels. Discussion?
Your Honor.
Yes.
Yeah, just, Ryan, I wanted to just confirm as I read the memo on this. The cost for storage of those panels, if I remember correctly, was something on the order of $45,000, and what this action will do is eliminate the expenditure of that $45,000?
That is correct. About roughly $45,000, $46,000 will save. With this change order, this will allow Midstates to mobilize and then proceed with the erection of the office portions of the Public Services Facility. That entire portion of the facility is all precast. And so allowing this will save a net savings of roughly $46,000. It will also expedite some of the work. This will allow some of the subcontractors to come in and do some work in the office portion as well. So staff is strongly recommending approval of the new resolution.
Okay, good. Thanks for that confirmation.
Yeah.
Okay, any other discussion? All right. All those in favor of approving Resolution Number 30999, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. Next on the agenda is a public comment period regarding the no parking zones within Area 1, which is an area that was designated by or identified by the staff. We have a presentation?
Yeah, sure. I give a quick presentation, then let the public come up and speak, and then we also have some public comments that you can see via email.
Okay.
So this was a attack report that was put together. As you may recall, we had an incident in '21 where the fire engine could not make it up Third Street north of 29th Avenue. They actually had to back back down Third Street in order to go around the block and respond to the emergency that they were responding to. From that, we brought that area, basically, it was 29th to 33rd, 10th to Albernett, brought that to City Council to evaluate and made it so that it was only one side parking on various streets to make that area safer. The Fire Department is also looking at changing their deployment model where instead of responding with the medical unit, they're actually responding with the full engine. And so obviously, this is more going to become more and more of a safety issue if they can't get around the street and deliver that that care that they are trying to provide to our residents. So there's a detailed tack report that was available both to the public, that was mailed to them, part of your agenda packet, and then we printed off the map to show you. And again, it's in your council packet that we could zoom in and see. The sides of these streets were picked based on how much parking we could save. So if the north side had a more linear foot of space to park versus the south side, we would make it so that more parking was available if we had to take parking away from one side or the other. So I'll open up for a public comment.
Thank you. Is there anyone here to address the council on this measure? Please come forward at this time. Good evening. Just, hi, please state your name and address, and then go ahead and address the council. Thank you.
Floyd Westlink. I live at 960 West 14th Avenue in Marion. Been there for 49 years. West 14th, I made my comments, I sent them into Mike. So he has them, and I don't know if you've seen them or not, so I'm not going to repeat myself, but West 14th is, you know, the last street in the neighborhood, very little traffic. Currently, most of the parking is done on the north side of the street. That's just by, I guess, habit of the residents. Plus, there are more residents on that side of the street and more driveways on that side of the street than there is on the south side. So the habit is to park anywhere from eight to 10 vehicles at any max, maximum number of any time on that street. Most of them park in areas that are not opposite driveways, so they don't have, they're not blocking people backing onto their driveways, so they have to be careful to do that. I think there's only one or two vehicles that park on the south side of the street. So the habit of the neighborhood is to park on the north side of the street, and that's my recommendation that the city follow that. That would only cause one or two people to have to change their parking habits to go under this, go across the street rather than remain on the south side. So the people on the south side wouldn't have any effect by by parking on the north side because nobody parks there anyway. And the people on the north side wouldn't have to change their habits because that's where they're currently parking. So I just thought that'd be a good recommendation. There doesn't seem to be any other main reasons to do that. There are, I kind of estimated, like the gentleman said, there's probably a couple more spots on the north side than on the south side, but with eight or 10 vehicles max that are parked there on any given evening or weekend. Just that's not a problem, according to the number. Otherwise, the rest of my comments are in that memo that I sent to Mike, so that's all I have to say. Thank you. I guess the only thing would be, it would be appreciated if you take into consideration the viewpoint of the residents of that street. I've talked to over half of the people on the north side of the street, and they would prefer parking remain on the north side of the street. And one other comment about through the other streets, Terrace and Lynnview. If they put the no parking on the east side, those people have to park uphill. And in winter time, that's going to cause a problem, I think, just for your input. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else to address the council on this, on this matter? Okay. And then do we have comments outside this meeting?
Yes, we received seven emails prior to the meeting, so I'll just run through those.
Please.
Martin McDole at 935 West 9th Avenue in support of no on-street parking on West 9th and Lindale Drive. Pam and Steve Mensner, 880 West 10th Avenue in opposition of parking on north side of West 10th Avenue. John and Diane Arney, 1030 Dry Creek Lane, in opposition of no parking on west side of Dry Creek Lane. David and Judy Rorson, 1260 Parkview Drive, in opposition of no parking on north side of Alpine Road. Floyd Westlink, 960 West 14th Avenue, recommends no parking be placed on the south side of West 14th Avenue. Larry Kramer, 1060 Lynnview Drive, in opposition of the restriction of parking throughout Linwood Knolls, in opposition of no parking on the west side of Lynnview. And then Esther Olson at 1080 Lynnview recommends an alternating schedule of odd-even days.
Okay. Any other comments received that's at the meeting? That's it? Okay. Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public comment section and move on to the motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the project calendar regarding no parking zones within Area 1 as follows. Please be patient with me as I read all of these into the record. Motion to receive and file the Traffic Advisory Committee Report Regarding No Parking Zones Within Area 1. Resolution Number 31, 31,000, approving the establishment of a no parking zone on the south side of West 8th Avenue, westerly of Lindale Drive. Resolution Number 30,000, 31,001, approving the establishment of a no parking zone on the north side of West 9th Avenue. Resolution Number 31,002, approving the establishment of a no parking zone on the south side of West 10th Avenue. Resolution Number 31,003, approving the establishment of a no parking zone on the south and west side of Dry Creek Lane. Resolution Number 31,004, approving the establishment of a no parking zone on the north and east side of Alpine Road and rescinding Resolution Number 14122 and 14606. Resolution Number 31,005, approving the establishment of a no parking zone on the north side of West 14th Avenue. Resolution Number 31,006, approving the establishment of a no parking zone on the east side of Lynnview Drive. Resolution Number 31,007, approving the establishment of a no parking zone on the east side of Terrace Street. Resolution Number 31,008, approving the establishment of a no parking zone on the west side of Elm Street and the east side of Elm Street from West 14th Avenue to Parkview Drive and rescinding Resolution Number 14658. Resolution Number 31,009, approving the establishment of a no parking zone on the west side of Button Hill Drive. Resolution Number 31,010, approving the establishment of a no parking zone on the south side of Donnelly Drive. Resolution Number 31,011, approving the establishment of a no parking zone on the west side of Lindale Drive from West 8th Avenue to Parkview Drive and on the east side of Lindale Drive from the intersection of West 8th Avenue to 90 feet north of West 8th Avenue and on the east side of Lindale Drive from 50 feet south of Alpine Road, westerly to the intersection of Alpine Road, easterly and rescinding, Resolution Number 10667. Resolution Number 31,012, approving the establishment of a no parking zone on the west side of Parkview Drive and the east side of Parkview Drive between West 9th Avenue and West 8th Avenue.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the project calendar regarding the no parking zones within Area 1 as presented by Councilmember Jensen. Now we can have discussion. Questions for staff? Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, Mike, can we have some additional comments? Is there any other? You talked about you looked at where the most parking was, on which side of the street. Did you look at other aspects? Like Floyd brought up regarding, for example, on Lynnview Drive, that in the winter drive, if in the winter time, if the parking is on the west side of the street, that they'll be parking uphill? Or does that really make a difference? Or did you look at fire hydrants, anything else? Is it primarily parking spots only?
Yeah, so when we look at it, we take driveways, mailboxes, and fire hydrants out of the equation. So we're taking a look at that total linear foot, and then we're just trying to make sure that churning movements can occur and that there's the most available parking as possible is what our goal was.
Okay.
So that's why a few of them had maybe parking, for example, Lindale has no parking on one side on the entire thing, but then there's also some that you read that was also in sections on the east side. And those are actually, we're fixing just some of the old resolutions, but that's how it's set up. So that there's some area with limited visibility where we don't want parking on either side. And so that's why some were complicated and rescinding old resolutions that are in there. So just cleaning it up so that it's current and up to date.
Go ahead, Sarah.
So in response to that question on, for example, the West 14th, so I look at the map. We're talking about driveways. It looks like the south side of West 14th. There's only a few driveways that are on that side of the road. It looks like it's kind of there because they're on their yeah, compared to on the north side, if I'm reading north and south correctly, where there's a lot of driveways. So then I'm looking at the linear feet or something. So can you kind of reiterate again why the north side was chosen? Or is it, was it a, this could go either way if we're hearing?
So on West 14th, if you can read it, the north side has 1,035 linear foot of available parking. After you take away the driveways, mailboxes, any of those impediments, the south side has 1,096 linear foot. So by putting the no parking on the north side, we're making more parking available.
You mean putting the parking on the north side or no, wait, is it?
We're putting no parking on the north side, which is, has less parking available. So again, we're trying to leave as much parking as is available on the street. That's our goal. We're trying to make it an impact. We know that this is an impact to the residents. We're trying to minimize that impact by leaving the most amount of parking available. And obviously, the side of the street that has less driveways, there's less than, they can park more places because there's not those driveways interfering with them.
But it's the part, so I'm not an engineer, so, but if the parking is on the south side, isn't there more chance of visibility issues with people coming off of these streets? Wanting to turn? I mean, that doesn't exist if parking's on the north side.
Obviously, we keep them away from the intersection. But again, we're talking about very low volumes here. These are not collectors or anything. These are local streets. So that's not a high concern in this area.
Your Honor.
Okay, go ahead.
Mike, this is a process question. If we were to alter the recommendation on West 14th, what do we need to go through? Is it re-noticing the neighborhood, all of that kind of activity?
Nope, you would just pull that out of the project calendar, basically amend the motion and change it.
I see.
If you wanted us to re-notify and change, we have not done that in the past.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Yeah, I will say I did drive over in this neighborhood. I've got a sister-in-law that lives on West 9th, so I'm in the neighborhood quite often. So I did drive, the ones that we had received letters from, I did drive all of those streets just to see how they felt, how they looked. Basically, I was indifferent whether you change it from the north side to the south side. Given the documentation that you have here, the side you picked has more parking space. I guess I did not see any other reason to want to have to switch it from one side to the other, and that gives at least that advantage to that, the people on that street versus a particular household. So I did not see any compelling reason to change any of them based upon the streets that I drove this afternoon.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Randy.
Thank you. I just wanted to, excuse me, echo what Mr. Jensen said as well, too, because I take a look at these as well. From a snow removal standpoint, and by moving the parking to the south side, one is it gives us that capacity for the maximum amount of parking, but then also, two, we all know how challenging it is when a snowplow comes through those areas, and you have to clear out that that apron to each one of these driveways out onto the streets. So I can only imagine if we have more vehicles parked there, I'm looking at a Google satellite, and I'm seeing cars parked out there right now. We're at maximum, you're only going to get two cars in between each apron into the driveway. A couple would be possibly three, it would be kind of crunched, but I'm always looking at it, too, from a services standpoint of clearing these roads out from a snow removal. So I will as well be in favor of no altering of that.
Anyone else? Go ahead. So all the comments that were received, the emails, have, did engineering look into any of those suggestions that were made by the residents in the neighborhood?
Yeah, so it depends on some of the, so some of them had a lot of questions in the emails of, when you saw the actual emails. And so I would respond back and give them answers as to why, even though it's detailed in the tack report. But that's the recommendation that we proceeded with. So we're telling them what our recommendation is, and we did not alter any of our recommendations based on citizen comments.
I think Will's question was, if I'm right, is that you did look at every one of them and consider them, and then decided to not to make any changes.
Correct.
All right. Anyone else?
I guess I have another.
Okay.
What the gentleman brought up with the, what streets were they? Terrace and was it Lynnview or was it Elm? I forget. What the parking pill that Steve brought up, I think that makes sense to go the other direction on those. I mean, if it was me living there, I wouldn't want to have to try and go uphill in the snow days. From a parking, if you're, you know, unbearing your car and you're trying to take off and you're going uphill, it might be hard to do. Those I could see potentially switching them. Which streets were they? Was Terrace and was it Elm or Lynnview?
Lynnview.
We don't know the air space between Alpine and 14th. Anyone else?
So process-wise, process-wise, if we're thank you, Mike, for putting this all together and for all the measurements and everything that's gone into it because A, that's helpful, and B, it's helpful to understand it wasn't random. It wasn't like just driving like, okay, we're just going to do the north, you know, whichever it happens to be, there was, there was a there was a base of a science put into it. But I do appreciate the information of, from people who are in the neighborhoods of the actual use. And kind of how you see that, I think about my own neighborhood and people like to park in front of their own house. If you're hauling things or even if it's not a busy street, but if you have people there that you like, people tend to park want to park by their house, um or if you have an extra car. So process-wise on on this, we would have to pull out any ones we wanted, if we wanted to talk about north, south. Um or which side of the road because of snow, if we wanted to look at any of those. We need to pull out those one by one and then have a discussion on each one individually. Is that what I heard?
Close Garcia, the attorney that.
I think you should pull them out one by one and have discussion on each of them and then separately vote on the ones that you've pulled. That would be the clearest record.
Just to clarify, Mike, so you said, like, if there was a hydrant on one side, you took the, what would it be, twenty feet? You're supposed to park ten feet on either side, is that correct?
I believe it's five feet.
Might be, okay, so you took that ten feet out of. Thank you.
Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, and and again, I I still understand, you know, somewhat the comment about uh Lindview and Alpine and having to park uphill versus downhill. But if we look at the comments received, uh those two streets, we only see, received one comment related to Lindview, and he was just opposed to the parking plan throughout the entire Lindwood Knolls area. So specifically, I don't believe, based upon that, we received any opposition comments on either one of those streets. I think this gentleman did bring up that thought, which I think has some validity. But not hearing any comments from anybody in those two streets. You know, I'm, well, we can always change it if we think it's a problem in the future, but going forward, I, if we, since we didn't hear any comments, I would be proven it as is.
Okay, go ahead, Grant.
Well, I I think um Tac gave this pretty careful consideration and evaluation of the ones that were commented on. You know, I think maybe from the standpoint of what the overarching objective is, is to provide adequate access for emergency response. And um I I mean, that's got to be a priority throughout the city. So I'm maybe somewhat aligned with what Steve just said. I think maybe enacting the plan as currently designed. And then we um will have some experience this winter. Um residents will have some experience with, you know, is it relatively more parking for them or less parking? And we'll have an opportunity to receive comments back that might then ultimately make some uh experience-based um modifications to the design. So I'm in favor of um approving it as is with with that that in mind that we evaluate and take comments and see how it works.
Okay, anyone else?
Yeah, go ahead. Well, how long ago did the letters go out to the neighborhood?
It was dated November first.
And then what is, let's say, let's say, because I I appreciate, you know, got to moving things forward. But let's say we do get down the road and we're starting this process throughout the whole community. What is the process if it's um neighborhood or a street wants says, this isn't working for us, or we're having a problem in parking on the hill? Or whatever, it's, I'm assuming it's a petition that they would bring forward to change. What is our process if we needed to ever change the parkings to another side of the street as we are going to be doing this throughout the entire community?
Uh right now, according to the tac procedure, that would take a petition with twenty signatures. So um we can modify that if you wanted to, but that's the current procedure.
And and I would just add that um to Councilman Harper's point, as we're going through, if if we as our our municipal operations are continuing, if we observe something, then we would also then, on our end, be proactive and bring forward uh our observations to the council. So it's not necessarily relying purely on the the neighborhood to to bring forward a petition. Um our our staff is going to make sure that if it's, if it's on paper, it looks good. And it makes sense, and if it in 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 action, it's not working, then we will be proactive and be bringing that for.
Go ahead, Steve. One more quick question, Mike. When would the this change go into effect? When would the signs be put up?
Yeah, so I mean, technically, it's legal as soon as you guys pass it, but the signs, public service, I don't know if you have the timeline.
Yeah, upon approval of the resolution, we would, we would have to, there's quite a few signs, we'd have to order the signs. So I would think we could get the installations done by the third or fourth week of December.
Okay.
Depending on delivery.
It's about a hundred signs they have to install, so it's not going to happen overnight.
Anyone else? Okay, are we ready to vote? All right, all those in favor of approving the motion to approve the project calendar regarding the no parking zones within area one? Please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please say no. Okay, the motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-two dash twenty-three, approving a request to rezone the property from AG Agricultural Holding to SR three suburban medium density, single-family residential for property located west of Winslow Road, south of Tower Terrace Road Extended, Marion, Iowa Atwood Rentals LLC. This is a second consideration.
Second. It's removed and seconded to approve ordinance number twenty-two dash twenty-three, proving the request to rezone the property from agricultural holding to suburban medium density, single-family residential for the property west of Winslow Road and south of Tower Terrace Road Extended. This is the the second consideration discussion.
Your Honor, just a comment. I just want to say that uh again, I appreciate the responsiveness of the developer relative to our concern with this modification, so.
Okay, um I just realized I should, I shouldn't participate in this one, so I'll let the mayor pro temp do the vote.
Yeah, the discussion. And we will vote. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. And motion carries with one abstention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh this time we have a public comment section for any comments from members of the public on any item at all. Anyone here to address council, please come forward. Come on forward. State your name and address, please.
Good evening, Scott Fones, twenty-two thirty-one, Tamarack Circle. I said I'd try and stop by quarterly in honor of Paul Draper to kind of do a Paul Draper moment. And because the uh Marion Fire Department has been in the news here recently, I thought maybe I'd give a kind of a little bit of background. From the time Marion was organized through all of the nineteenth and a little bit of the twentieth century, um fire protection was kind of a volunteer type activity. And when I say volunteer, I mean even the fire companies themselves were organized as volunteers. So for example, and all of the companies were named after the person that was sponsoring them. So there was the Fullerton Hose Company, the Owen Hose Company, the Booth Hook and Ladder Company, and interestingly enough, the Mincer Hose Company. Through that time, they were housed in a variety of different areas and kind of covered different parts of the city. And when there was a fire, certain companies would come to the scene, and afterwards, the city council would decide who they were going to pay. Um sometimes they paid both companies, sometimes there was a fight in the street, though that didn't happen very often. Um but the reason I bring this up is Marion kind of organized a more formal type of fire department in eighteen ninety-five with uh ordinance number twenty-five. In which um the fire chief was elected, and there was a fire chief even before then, and he was elected at that time. And they gave him a hundred and fifty dollars a year. Now, I certainly hope we're paying a little bit more than that, but I just wanted to mention that that kind of, that's kind of how that was structured at that time. Um but one of the fire stations is in a Marion Historic District. If you're all familiar with Scott's Furniture Stripping and more, whatever that is, that used to be the home for uh the Owen Hose Company. And when I was looking at the information for that building, um I came across something that I haven't seen in any of our current fire stations. And since there's kind of this discussion around Station Three and remodel versus relocate and 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 kind of that thing, and I've been in all of the fire stations. I happened to notice that this room was missing also. And it's called the Tramp House. In the late nineteenth century, of course, Marion was a nexus point for the Milwaukee Road. Well, th- there were individuals who kind of wandered through the town, um hitching rides on the train. And when they came to town, they would need someplace to sleep. Well, in the back of Scott's Furniture, which was a hose company at that time, there was a tramp house. And on the walls, the tramps would etch in certain types of graffiti. And even to this day, some of that still exists. Now, we're no longer a railroad hub. But as you're considering that fire station, I don't know if we want to consider a tramp house or not. Just thought I'd mention it. Thank you all very much and have a fantastic evening.
Thank you. Okay, um that brings us to the council comments. Let's start with Councilmember Sternad. Councilmember Mincer. Steve?
I have one. Today was National Take a Hike Day. So there were a group of us that met at Thomas Park to take a hike with Mike, Mike Semperich. And uh y- you got to watch Mike sometimes. You better, you better find out exactly where this hike is going. So anyway, we took the hike, it's supposed to be a thirty-minute hike, which was fairly close to that. So our group went out on this nice paved path, went out, and then he said, all right, this is the halfway point. You can either turn back and walk back on the concrete, or you can go with me and we're going to go up this hill uh and and come back to this. He said it's a little hill, not bad. Not true. I was out of breath. This this hill went up about like that. And it's in the area of the park where they just planted nine hundred trees. I was extremely winded by the time I hiked up to the top. And but look at all the number of people that were out there on that hillside planting nine hundred trees. So I just walked up the hill once. Imagine how many times those individuals representing our city and making it better were marching up and down that hill. So but here's the other point about getting to the top of that hill. I'd encourage you, when you talk about a view, you know, Cedar Abbot talks about the view from Mount Trashmore. The view from the top of that hill was well worth the hike up it. It was terrific. Not as many trees blocking the view, but at this time of year, and you look around, do a three sixty, you can see a long ways up there. So if you want to take a short hike, just go down the trail into the American Legion Park, go around the corner, and then look up where they planted all the trees, hike up to the top, and it's well worth it.
I think what I heard is we know um how to get Steve out of breath, so.
All those, all those employees that were walking up there planting the trees are probably, what, fifty, six years younger than you?
Grant?
Oh my.
Grant, go ahead.
Yeah, so I just, to dovetail uh on that, so take a hike with Mike, uh just for general awareness. Mike Semperich, Marion City Arborist, was recently recognized as the inaugural recipient of the Merrill Merrill Changing Nature of Work Award presented by the National Recreation and Park Association. The award was announced uh by Merrill on November seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. So I think he was probably just a little energized, Steve, on the hike and wanted to, you know, burn off a little bit of that uh and that energy, so. Um I, the other comments that I would like to make is, um as I drove uh to the meeting, I was uh driving south on Tenth, got there by the intersection of um on uh Seventh and and Tenth, and looking over this direction, seeing the library fully illuminated was kind of a stunning, nice uh view. And uh that's, it's just such a satisfying symbol of the work that's gone on over the last couple of years here in the uptown. And the only other thing that I would say um is um since this is our last meeting prior to the holiday, I certainly wish everybody a great Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Well, I want to add my congratulations to Mike Semperich. You know, just one more, one more um uh wonderful member of our team putting Marion on the map nationally. Mike uh has done a great job in helping uh lead, lead the recovery efforts from the derecho. He and his team in the last year alone planted over fifteen hundred trees and secured over a hundred and ten thousand dollars in grant funding in twenty twenty-two to support our efforts uh in replanting. And he's been really crucial in building relationships with uh partners who have helped to fund our tree planting and to and to provide uh the trees with like Monarch Research entries forever. Um Mike's just a a good member of our team, and we're so proud to have him uh be on Team Marion. Um one of the neat things about the award that Mike received is that um it's accompanied by a ten thousand dollar gift to the city to help support our replanting efforts. So congratulations to Mike and uh everyone uh on his, on his uh crew. Tom, is this your last meeting? Well, thank you for all your work for the city over all these years. Um you can be really proud of your accomplishments and being part of all the great things that have happened here, and we wish you the very best. And um on December second is the Christmas in the Park event. Encourage everyone to attend. It's going to be the inaugural lighting of our new, our new tree. Uh it's been fun seeing all the holiday lights go up and uh that's, that's a, that's been a multi-year project to enhance our holiday lighting. And it's great to see the community get so excited about the lights, and we continue to add to that um every year. So I'll look forward to seeing everyone on the second in City Square for the lighting of the, of the new tree. And um just want to thank everyone for all their hard work as we approach the holidays here. Um just want to say thank you, um really grateful to be part of this team. Great to um uh have the opportunity to serve the residents of Marion with everyone and to continue to work hard, reach higher, to um provide everyone with the the great opportunities that we've been able to provide over the last few years, put Marion on the map. And um it's um really earned us recognition as a standout community across the state, so let's keep things going. Um our latest uh installment in our, in our drive to reach higher is the new library, which opened recently. And it's been fun seeing all the excitement about that in the community. I I agree with Grant, um that when you see it in the, at night or in the dark, um you see all the lights, it just, it it has that big city feel, and it's kind of cool to it it it's such a neat building because of all the windows, and it actually invites you in to come in and check it out. You can see inside, and it's, it has that warm feeling that invites you to 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 go in and check it out. And it's, it's a true community center that has something for everyone. It's um, it's really going to become a hub for our community that serves people in many different ways besides just books. So um. With that, thank you all for attending. We do have a closed session tonight, so maybe we have the motion for that.
May I make a motion to adjourn to closed session regarding real estate transactions as permitted under section twenty-one point five one J of the Code of Iowa?
Second. It's been moved and seconded to adjourn to closed session regarding real estate transactions as permitted under section twenty-one point five one J of the Code of Iowa. May we have uh the council's comments, please?
Yes, I've reviewed the matter and the matter, uh on my advice, fall squarely within twenty-one point five uh one J. To discuss the purchase or sale of particular real estate only where premature disclosure could be reasonably expected. To increase the price, the governmental body would have to pay for the property or reduce the price the governmental body would receive for that property.
Thank you. Any discussion before we vote? Roll call, please.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkins?
Yes.
Mayor Abu Osli?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Ms. Mensur?
Yes.
Mr. Sternet?
Yes. Thank you for joining us. We're adjourned to closed session.